Good evening and welcome to the City of Hayward Planning Commission Meeting for June 12th, 2025. We're holding a hybrid meeting with some participants in the council chambers and others who have joined virtually via Zoom. This meeting is being webcast on Comcast TV Channel 15 and live streamed on the city's YouTube channel and on the city's website. Pursuant to AB 2449, Commissioner Goodbody will be attending the meeting via teleconference due to just cause. Commissioner Goodbody, is there anyone with you over the age of 18?
Hi, good evening.
Good evening. Is there anyone with you over the age of 18?
Yes.
There's, can you state their relationship to you?
Yes, my mother.
Okay, thank you. All right, this meeting is called to order at 7:03 PM. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Allen, will you please call roll?
Good evening. Commissioner Franco Clausen, absent. Commissioner Goodbody?
Present.
Commissioner Hammond?
Present.
Commissioner Lowe?
Here.
Commissioner Myers?
Present.
Commissioner Stevens, absent. Chair Hardy?
Present.
We will now open the public comments on non-agenda items. The public comments section provides an opportunity to address the Planning Commission on items not listed on the agenda. The Commission welcomes comments and requests that speakers present their remarks in a respectful manner with in-established time limits and focused on issues which directly affect the city or are within the jurisdiction of the city. As the Commission is prohibited by state law from discussing items not listed on the agenda, your item will be taken into consideration and may be referred to staff for further action. Speakers shall not use threatening, profane, or abusive language which disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of a Commission meeting. The city is committed to maintaining a workplace free of unlawful harassment and is mindful that city staff regularly attend Commission meetings. Discriminatory statements or conduct that is hostile, intimidating, oppressive, or abusive, or per se disruptive to a meeting will not be tolerated. Ms. Allen, oh, just before we go to that, I want to acknowledge that Commissioner Stevens has joined us at 7:05 PM. Ms. Allen, do we have any public comments at this time?
There are none.
Great. All right, so then I will close public comments and we will now move on to our action items. So for agenda number, agenda item number one, the Planning Commission may make a recommendation to the City Council. Item 1PH25028 is a public hearing for a proposed amendment to Chapter 10, Planning, Zoning, and Subdivision, Article 15, Tree Preservation Ordinance of the Hayward Municipal Code to update the regulatory guidelines for the designation, removal, and mitigation of protected trees, proposed amendments to the adopted 2026 master fee schedule, and finding the proposed project as exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act or SEQA pursuant to SEQA guidelines. Does staff have a presentation for this item?
We do.
Thank you.
Good evening, Planning Commission. Peter Jensen, Landscape Architect, City of Hayward. Yes, tonight we're going to actually have an action item. We've met before about this topic a couple times. Those are work-study sessions. I'm excited to get us to this point, and I know staff is as well to get the ordinance updated. The tree preservation ordinance for the City of Hayward has been in existence since the 1950s. The last time it was updated was in 2002, so it definitely has been a while. We're going to follow directions from the city's strategic roadmap to fulfill the update of the ordinance. We want the ordinance to align with the Climate Action Plan and the Hayward 2040 General Plan. Like I said before, we have met previously with the City Council twice and with the Planning Commission twice. Since our last meeting, comments provided by both council and the Commission, we've made some minor updates, some clarification to the intent and process, revised and added some definitions, added reference to the street tree list in the appendix that's in the submittal. I'm sorry. There's something in my throat. I'm having a hard time. We've revised and consolidated the criteria of the heritage tree removal and appeals process and reorganized the ordinance for clarity. As we've discussed before, the main updates to the ordinance are the preservation of native trees on private property, mostly in rear yards. This is just for native trees, which makes up a small amount of the amount of actual trees on private property, but due to their size and age have a big impact on our urban forest. We've also revised per comment from both staff and the Commission to do a two-to-one ratio, which was due to reducing the amount of, that's the financial amount for replacing those trees. We also wanted to create a sliding scale for the permit process to make it more equitable for the community. We're also adding a heritage tree designation, which was not part of the process before in the ordinance. This is to protect larger-scale trees, and to do that, we have to meet some criteria that we've established in the ordinance to make sure that we can protect those trees. It's very important that we protect our large-scale trees. These are trees usually over 150 years old, so very important to our community to try to save them as much as possible. We also talked about the mitigation for development, maintaining the appraised value that we have currently, and incorporating canopy replacement during the review process so we can make sure that canopy is replaced when it is lost. We're also recommending an INLU fee, which would cover the cost of mitigation that is not covered by replacing trees on-site during the process of development. And we've done kind of a nexus study on this, and we feel that the 125% of the appraised value of those trees is the value that represents the INLU fee that covers the cost for staff of purchasing and planting and managing basically those trees that could not be replaced on-site when they're lost. The tree removal penalty, we clarified that as it wasn't clarified in the ordinance before, is just being double the permit cost. If you remove a tree that's protected illegally, then that would be the fine for it, but you would also have to mitigate the trees themselves, which is basically the main thing that we want to focus on, of course, as far as the preservation ordinance goes, is making sure that the trees are mitigated. We also wanted to have proposed reducing the permit duration from a six-month period to a three-month period. This is done for staff to manage those removals, as well as making sure that the removals of trees that are hazard are done in a timely manner. I also want to point out that there's an addition of an appendix to the ordinance now that basically goes through best practices of caring for trees, lists of recommended trees, list of our native trees, a list of the invasive species that we would not want planted in Hayward, as well as the CAL FIRE severity map, the FAA map around the airport, and other best management practices for trees that people can go to for reference. That will also be put into a website as well for easy access for the community to engage with so that they have information basically on best practices of what to do while planting trees and caring for trees. We're also recommending a sliding scale for permit fees. This would be for the permit for tree removals, as well as for pruning of trees. We are proposing this for, I guess, two reasons. One, again, for equity for the community. You know, 90% or more of our tree removal or tree pruning permits are for trees of one tree. And so currently now, the permit fee is $490. It's a flat fee. If you take out one tree, or if you take out 100 trees, it's basically the same fee. We felt that because removing one tree takes less staff time, that we could reduce that amount for most folks that are applying for it, and then have a cost recovery for trees that are above three that take more staff time, of course, to oversee. And of course, most of the overseeing is basically the, making sure the tree is mitigated and new trees are planted basically on-site. So you can see basically the range there of two or less trees, then three to five trees, six to eight, nine or more, and then of course, there's a heritage tree permit that is as well, which usually takes a little bit more work because there's a lot more community engagement with that and more community concern with, of course, taking out trees of that nature. We also have an annual pruning permit that a local arborist and tree pruning companies can apply for that is there as well. So we're asking for your recommendation for adoption by the council for this fee schedule update. The proposed update to the tree preservation ordinance covers a lot of different policies and goals in our general plan. You can see them all here on the screen. It's quite a few, and I would say there's probably at least 10 more of them that go along with this. So trees are kind of intertwined as a main component of being able to achieve the goals that the city has for the environment. And of course, I mentioned before that the update to the tree preservation ordinance is part of the strategic roadmap priority of getting that done. The proposed amendment changes to the ordinance itself are exempt from SEQA, Class 7 and Class 8. You can see those actions there. Basically, a city is maintaining, enhancing its natural resource and environment to establish a procedure of protection, which makes basically the amendment changes exempt from a SEQA view itself. So tonight, we're coming before the Commission to ask for a recommendation to council to adopt the text amendment to the tree preservation ordinance, and encourage any questions or comments tonight to discuss about the draft that was presented to you. Following this meeting, if the Commission feels that its recommendation to move to council, it will move to council for adoption later this summer, and then, once adopted, staff will embark on community outreach and an awareness program for the updates of the ordinance itself. And with that, I'll turn it over to questions and comments to the Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Jensen. At this time, we will open Commissioner questions. So do any Commissioners? Commissioner Lowe?
Thank you so much for your presentation, Mr. Jensen. My question is, the INLU fee, that's 125% of the appraised value minus the trees proposed to be mitigated on-site, what I wanted to know is, is the extra 25% that you talked about is for staff, is this 125% fee and that extra 25% for staff, is this a fee that is similar to what our surrounding cities are charging?
I do not know. I do not know if they do or not. I know that Hayward is unique in the fact that it requires the mitigation based upon the appraised value of the tree. That has been the standard for the ordinance for a long time now. Providing the INLU fee allows an applicant developing a property to, if they are unable to plant that appraised value of trees on-site to plant them in other locations around the city, it basically, those funds then go to the city to plant new trees. The 25% addition on there is basically the management of the purchasing of the trees, the planting of the trees, and then as well as the maintenance and water that goes into establishing the trees for a minimum of two-year period. So from my knowledge, I don't know or have any knowledge of another municipality in the Bay Area that uses the appraised value for this, but...
What do they usually use?
They usually just use a ratio basically of replacement, and we do have our consultant online, Kevin from DUDAC. I don't know if you have any insight into other municipalities that use this technique to mitigate.
Yeah, so I can speak to at least San Mateo County. They actually use a flat fee for the INLU fee. That's around $3,300, I believe, for the tree that's not able to be replanted on-site. And so that was, that fee was based on a study that we did that involved costs for the city to purchase the tree and to grow and maintain and water the tree for three years. So that's what those costs were based on. I think other cities that we've worked with kind of have it on a basis that's decided by the director, so it can be on a range of scales and costs. But the one fee that we do know is around $3,300 for San Mateo County. And then with Hayward, I think the approach was to more go for, to see what can be mitigated on-site first, and then if whatever can't be mitigated on-site, that's when the INLU fee would come into play there.
Thank you. Is there generally a best practices? As it relates to this?
I don't think there's a set standard that's out there. You know, it's unique to each city based on their needs and their community's needs. I would say this is a reasonable approach based on what we've seen with other cities, but no set standard out there.
Thank you very much, and thank you again, Mr. Jensen.
Are there other Commissioner questions? Yes, Commissioner Hammond?
Hello. First, I want to thank the staff for putting together this ordinance and all of its attachments. I want to commend them for considering all of the comments and recommendations from the previous work sessions. Each version of this ordinance that I've reviewed has been better than the last. Question, besides the information from DUDAC, I'm told that Planet Geo is also under contract to develop a full canopy assessment and software to better manage the information. How will this new information from Geotech affect this ordinance?
Well, the Planet Geo is actually managed by our Landscape Maintenance Services Division. It basically gives you, we looked at before in one of our first work sessions, the canopy analysis, which basically talked about how much the city is covered by tree canopy, but it's just mostly a general review of that canopy coverage. This will actually go and actually count every tree that's in the city, will provide its health, size, all that type of information where it's at, and then allow the landscape services to set up a program then to replace trees where they're lost, and then eventually, hopefully over time, having a projected plan like that into the future will then allow the planting of more trees and the expansion of the urban forest and the canopy in Hayward.
Okay. Will this data also include valuations for each protected tree?
Yes, it will.
And then, will the valuation of a protected tree in a backyard, how was this calculation developed, and will the cost discourage private property owners from cutting down their tree illegally? Or I guess, is there a cost difference between the cost of a public tree and a private tree?
Well, the tree survey that is being conducted is only being conducted on city trees, so street trees or trees in parks or on property that the city owns. It will not do a survey of trees on private property, especially in rear yards. So the only way that we'll then really have an interaction with that is when someone applies for a permit to either prune or remove a tree in their rear yard, that we would then recognize if it is a protected tree, a native tree, and provide guidance on what needs to be done basically as next steps to do so. So it doesn't really have any association with private property, native trees that we're recommending for protection in the ordinance itself. Mostly, it's about city trees, more particularly, street trees, and the quantities that we have and where we're missing them so that we can be replaced.
But you could use that valuation to help homeowners in the mitigation for their backyard trees?
When you say valuation, what do you, you mean like the cost of the tree or the value of the tree? So the value of the tree, I guess, is based on multiple things. There is an actual appraised value of the tree itself, which is required as part of our current arborist report for a protected tree if you're submitting for removal of that tree to be a part of it. So that is something that is made clear to the property owner once they have an arborist report done, which, you know, if you have a significant amount of tree in the tree, let's say it's a 150-year-old native oak tree and it's worth, you know, $50,000, it's very clear at that point that the tree is very significant, I would say, to the homeowner itself, or the property owner. I think our reasoning too is that, you know, we'd like people to understand the benefits of the tree. Of course, the appraised value is one, but there are other benefits that go along as well that you can start to measure with the shade value and slowing down a runoff and things of that nature. So trees are important in that respect, as well as quantifying their benefit to the community. So all those factors will play into account, you know, when someone submits a permit to remove, so that they have a clear understanding of the benefits that that tree is providing, not just to their property, but to the overall community to make a determination if they want to try to move forward to remove the tree.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Can this information developed by Planet Geo be added to the appendix, to the Appendix Attachment 5 with their maps, along with the fire, marsh, and airport maps?
I don't think as a printed document it could, just because the amount of information that is there. I've seen a tree inventory printed out, and it's thousands of pages long, just because it's basically, it is tracking every tree that's there. If there's a way to make it easier for the community to interface with that, that's something that we can have further conversations with the consultant, with a consultant company that's putting it together to make something of that, if that's possible.
Okay, I think, yeah, there's a lot of information there that, I guess, might overwhelm everybody, but it's also a lot of good information.
Yeah, I mean, there's an interface with it that usually has an aerial map, and as you zoom in, it starts to make the individual trees more noticeable, and for city purposes, usually it's used by our maintenance staff to actually then click on the tree and get information basically about the tree. What type is it? How old is it? What condition is it in? I'm not sure if that is used by other municipalities to have as an open interface to the community so they can also access it, but that's something that we can discuss with them about.
Very good. And then on...
Excuse me, Commissioner. One of the things I was just going to add is that we are hoping to at some point add a separate GIS layer, which is public-facing, so that residents know where the tree canopies are, and that, again, just helps them understand contextually with their neighborhood, kind of where they fit in. So that is something that we will continue to look at and refine. Obviously, it's about, a lot of it is about cost, and the program that Peter was talking about that our Maintenance Service Division is launching, we actually got a federal grant for, but it's super, very expensive, like almost half a million dollars, to be able to operate this software program, and it's very complex. We are hoping to be able to utilize that just for our landscape architects, to be able to review and verify and validate arborist reports that we get, so that we can make sure that the appraised value that is reflected in there does reflect best practices, and it's not either undermining or overminding, overselling the appraised value for those particular species.
All right, good, very good. And a question on LU-411, Streetscape Enhancements. Are the visual corridors such as the underground utilities, sidewalk widening, street lighting, benches, et cetera, a part of the INLU fees or capital improvement costs for planting trees, or are they separate costs?
Those would be separate costs. The INLU fee would just be for the replacement of new trees.
Okay. And then HQL-8.1, Manage and Enhance the Urban Forest by Planting New Trees. How can we get started planting aggressively and making planting trees a top priority?
That's something that this new software will help us do. It'll start to set up a long-term planting strategy for the city to embark on. I know that right now Landscape Maintenance Services, you know, plants a lot of replacement trees already, year after year, and it's basically going on. Of course, it's an ongoing proposition to keep doing so. You have trees, of course, that are lost every year, and you need to be replanting them. There are other, though, methods as well of having the community planting events or nonprofit groups, things of that nature, that we also will be looking into to help that robust planting to gain more momentum and plant more trees.
Okay. Because I'm told by Maintenance Services that they're allocated around a little over $100,000 a year, not including grants when they get them for planting new trees. Is that enough money to meet our goals of meeting our 10% canopy expansion? And how can we get more money and manpower to them to plant more trees?
Well, that's the, one of the main purposes behind having the INLU fee is to generate more revenue to help that happen and enhance basically that budget to move forward to plant more trees. Yeah, I think that's what we're trying to do, to help them out to make that happen.
Okay.
I would say, though, that it is a daunting task to increase the canopy by 10%. It is planting, you know, thousands of trees basically a year to make that happen. So it is a long-term goal that the city should have now for perpetuity and to continue to do so. The new software will also assist with monitoring how we're doing, if we're expanding the canopy as we want to, and trying to meet our goal, or if we're not, and then helping then decide on what next steps need to be done to, you know, make that more efficient and achievable.
Very good. Thank you. And then CS-3.7, Removal of Fire Hazards. Who pays for this? Is it part of the code enforcement budget or the street maintenance budget?
As far as trees go, that's mostly upon the property owners themselves. If they're cited for having a fire hazard, what we've done in the ordinance is made the permit exempt so they don't have to actually have a permit and pay the fee to remove, you know, the hazard basically that's there. But the cost currently falls on the property owner themselves for the removal.
And then what happens when homeowners can't afford to remove their overgrown fire hazards even with the removed permit fees?
We've discussed, and I will bring back to council as we collect the INLU fees, and... and understand how much we actually are raising, and then discuss with council further the determination on how those actual funds will be used. I would say the majority are gonna be used for the replacement of trees, and planting of new trees, but there also is the possibility of using some of those funds to assist property owners with what you're talking about exactly, is helping them maintain their trees. I think that, of course, it would probably be based upon their ability to pay for those things, and, you know, assist lower-income, basically, property owners, and doing that first as a priority.
Okay, and does code enforcement have the manpower to please the entire city canopy? Do they have enough bite to enforce it?
I can chime in with that. We, you know, our code enforcement works, they work on a complaint basis, and so, we get plenty of requests through Access Hayward. Interestingly, though, the majority of the complaints that are filed actually involve trees on public property, so it would be areas along street frontages, or things like that, where neighbors are concerned about branches, or maybe potentially falling over. I can, Theo, I don't know if you know any numbers, I think we probably referenced that, but I think last year, we didn't have a lot of potential violations. I think most people understand, and actually, with some of the outreach that we've been doing over the last two years, with the update of this program, with the Tree Preservation Ordinance, a lot of that outreach has actually improved engagement with the community. They're calling us proactively, because they've heard about the program, and they wanna make sure that they're doing it the right way, and that's a good thing. That's what we want.
Very good. Okay, and on the preservation of native trees on private property, in lufies, these might sound like comments, but there are a few questions to follow. As per conversations that I've had with friends and neighbors throughout the city, they all agree that they want more trees, but a few also value their view more. Also, many are concerned with insurance cancellations, because of potential fires caused by trees in their yards, and overgrowth from their neighbors, and that if they want to install a pool, hardscape, fruit trees, or a garden in their backyards, that they have the flexibility, perhaps, to plant trees elsewhere. My questions are, will there be enough flexibility in the new ordinance for homeowners to mitigate, if they want to remove trees from their backyards?
Yes, and again, the protection is just for native trees, which makes up a small percentage of the actual trees in most private property. It is flexible in the respect that it's not protecting the majority of those trees, basically, so, but we do wanna protect the native trees, 'cause usually, they are of more of a mature size, so there has to be a little bit of give and take there, if you have a mature oak tree, or a few of them in your rear yard, to a deal. But, you know, the process of the removal permit allows staff to review the factors that are going in, and the requests that are being made, so there's always the possibility of doing so.
Okay, and also, in addition to the in-lufies, can people also volunteer to plant trees, or to volunteer to host trees for future planting, or things along that line?
As like a nursery stock, you mean?
Well, I know like 100,000, 100K trees, has trees for people to host, until they're big enough to plant. Could that be something also that could be offered?
I would say yes, that's definitely something that can definitely be considered, for sure.
We're hoping so, we're hoping so. This is a huge endeavor, and we're hoping that by forging some of these community partnerships with some of those organizations, we can help, they can help leverage some of that for us, and make sure that whatever trees are getting donated to the city are the right species, which means that they're native. I know a lot of the trees that are being donated right now are not necessarily native, which is not good for the environment, 'cause they typically aren't as resilient as those that are native species, and so, again, creating a program, following the adoption of the in-lu fee, and being able to analyze that on an annual basis, to find out where we can better, best program it. And again, this is, we don't, when we had the canopy, that was really establishing the baseline situation, and so, as we continue to plant, and we continue to analyze the canopy growth over the next five or 10 years, we'll start, hopefully, to make headways, and, you know, the first step is to, is to go and cover an area currently, that isn't covered, which is, of course, people's rear yard, and that's why, in many cases, people are cutting down trees, in many cases, they don't need a permit, it's allowed by right, and so, we would be expanding that protection, just for native species in the rear yard.
And then, just a question about the in-lu fees. Let's just say, over the last five years, how much of the in-lu fees have gone directly to planting trees? Do these fees ever tend to get watered down, go to something else?
Well, technically, we really haven't had an adopted in-lu fee that's part of the ordinance. We have been collecting fees that have been going directly to La Vista Park, so all those fees that have been collected are going to there. I would say that the fees, and Theo made no more of this, the fees that we've collected are over $200,000, or $300,000 in that amount. So, right now, that $500,000 is basically just being used to plant trees for a La Vista Park. As Theo said, it was over $500,000. So, from that, we have a clear track record, that we can collect in-lu fees, that they are fairly significant, and now, we want to just codify that in the ordinance, that it's a real thing that we are collecting, so then, we can use that then throughout the city, not just at a specific location, as a park, but through different neighborhoods, mostly looking at underserved areas of the city that have underserved canopy, and using that initial funding for those areas.
Okay, is there an annual report that explains where these cots go, and how much is spent?
Again, right now, no, there is not, just because all those, the funding is just all going to one park, basically, La Vista Park. That is probably something that we will do and track in the future, now that we've codified it in the ordinance itself, and keep track of how we're doing, and where we're planting, and where those actually funds are going to, and how it's helping to increase the canopy of Hayward.
All right, very, thank you very much, that's all my questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Myers.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you much. So, this is, so, in my whole career as a commissioner, I've missed two meetings, and both of them were the tree ordinance meetings. So, lucky you, you get me with everything today, so I apologize if it's a little bit lengthy, I will try to make it short as possible. In general, I'm a huge tree advocate, I think this is a wonderful ordinance change, for the most part, that doesn't mean I don't have my questions. On the first meeting, I wasn't here, however, I submitted a letter with some of my points, and it seems like some of those were addressed, so I really appreciate that. I also see that we've revised the permit costs for less than three trees, so one to two, and just to be clear, 'cause some of my questions are maybe to clarify some ambiguities that maybe only me have, but just in case other people might. The price of 3.92, that's if you do one tree or two, it's not per tree, is that right?
Correct.
Okay, good, I wanted to make sure of that. And then, I see that we've added, we have penalties if somebody doesn't listen, or doesn't abide by the permit rules, 'cause that was my first inkling, was that people would just not abide by it, but it sounds like we have some penalties in place for that. I do appreciate the waived fees, based on a few criteria, such as a dying tree, or imminent danger. Do we have in place something for people who are low-income, or really struggling, and need to, you know, wanna remove a tree? Do we have any provisions for that?
No, currently, that is not a provision of the ordinance at all. It does not use that as a measure.
Okay, and, let's see. So, one of the, oh, and I think the reduction of one year, or six months, to a three-month permit period is a very smart and efficient move, so I think that's a great idea. If this is all, let's say it's approved from council, would it go into effect immediately? Or is there a start date of six months down the road, or whatever?
It goes into effect 30 days after adoption, 'cause this would be a code change.
Okay, and then, when it does become in effect in 30 days, would it then affect the current projects that are in play right now, at the time?
If a development application came in, and would request to remove trees, they would be subject to the ordinance, that would be the regulations that are in the time, that are in effect. If their application, if they're under review, and they have not been deemed complete, they would be subject to the ordinance. If they've been deemed complete, and we're still working through, and they've, or they've come to the commission, or the council, and they've already been approved, or they've been approved at staff level, they would not be subject to this criteria.
Okay, okay, great. And then, I did notice just a little discrepancy that I was not understanding. On Attachment 3, it says in Section 10, 1529, it says that fines are to be paid within 60 days, but on the very next page, it says that, under Section 10, 1531, instead of 1529, it indicates they're to be paid within 30 days. So, I wasn't sure if I was misinterpreting something, under the different sections.
That's something that we can review further, I'm not sure.
Okay.
Kevin, do you have any insight into that, as far as looking at the text of those?
I think we'd probably just need to spend a little bit more time to make sure that we have both those sections consistent, so we can definitely check in to make sure those are the same number.
Okay, yeah, and I don't see it as an issue, I just, I know we're adding a lot of weeds here, and I wanna make sure that we make it as clarifying as possible.
Just to clarify, Commissioner Myers, you're talking about the, in Section 10, 15-29, where it talks about penalties?
Yes.
Okay, and you're talking about the second paragraph that talks about the code enforcement division?
Is that 15-31?
Yeah, so that 10-day reference in here is basically, so the property owner has 10 days to request administrative hearing, and to appeal that decision.
There's also a 30-day versus 60-day to pay the penalties? It's really not that big a deal, I don't wanna burden, overburden it.
No, it's an astute observation, so we will definitely take a look at that, and make sure that both of those things align, if they are discussing the same topics.
Thank you. And then, under the Section 8, in Attachment 5, the Fire Severity Hazard Map, it indicates that, it allows for the permit exceptions within this zone, and what I'm wondering is, if you're in this zone, does that mean you could remove trees at will? Or do you just go in and have to still open a permit, and just not pay the fee, but you're welcome to cut any trees you want in that environment, is that correct?
Now, the tree would have to be a fire hazard, so you should still submit for the permit, so the tree can be determined that it is a hazard, you just won't have to pay the fee, basically, for the permit, if it's deemed a hazard to remove it.
I read it as if it was in that zone, you were permit-free, but it's not, it's still a per basis kind of thing?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I also looked through the Tree Ordinance Guide, and I thought that was amazing. I loved the way it was put together, the way it explained how to find the diameter, and dividing by pi, and all that kind of stuff, I thought it was really well-written, so thanks for that. I asked that one. So, on the permit fee, how it was one to two, three to five, or whatever, and at the bottom, for multiple trees, it was a $1,000 deposit, plus time of material. Is there a way we could put a "not to exceed," or something, on that time of material? Because whenever I see an open time of material, it scares me that somebody could drag their feet, and all of a sudden, I'm paying thousands upon thousands.
I think the issue there, Commissioner, is that we've had, and history has taught us well, that we've had applicants, and namely, you know, when you have a project like that, when you have a developer, or a project that is proposing to remove a significant number of trees, it's usually in conjunction with the project, and that project likely is, includes other entitlements, so a site plan review, a use permit, rezoning, whatever. We wanna make sure that we are getting and capturing our time accurately. The problem that we've had before is that, when you get to that magnitude of tree removals, there's an arborist report that needs to be developed, the arborist report needs to be reviewed, it needs to be verified, there needs to be numerous site visits, to go out and analyze, to verify that the condition of the trees that are referenced in the report are actually, in fact, the case when you go out on the site visit. And then, there's also follow-up, dealing with the mitigation, making sure that things are planted, so it's not, it's not as simple as just saying, well, we're gonna charge a flat fee. We did that before, and we lost a lot of money, and we spent a lot of staff resources, and in a time when the city's in a really difficult budget situation, and we want development to be as cost recovery as possible, this is the fairest way to do it. So, if they complete, and submit a plan, and because it's based on time and materials, if it takes 10 hours, then they get charged for 10 hours. If it only takes a half hour, they only get charged a half hour, and they'll get the remainder of that deposit back to them. But we figured that is the fairest way, especially for projects, or on certain sites, where there's a significant number of removals, to make sure that we are being diligent in ensuring full cost recovery, to the degree that we can, for the community.
Oh, super, all right, thank you for that, and it totally makes sense with, with that number of trees, it typically is a larger project, and that totally makes sense, thanks for clarifying that. So, I think I'd like to transfer to my last topic, which is, which is really the only resistance I have to the changes, which is incorporating the rear yard coverage. Can I start off and ask how many other municipalities that we know of are now including that rear yard?
Kevin, do you have any insight on, too, other municipalities that include trees on, native trees on private property in the rear yard protection?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, it is a mix. I would say, I'm just looking at a table here that I have, I think probably it's in the, you know, 15% to 25% range of municipalities in the Bay Area, that have that provision in their ordinance, so somewhere along those lines, it's not the majority, but, you know, it is a way to further protect trees, and especially native trees in the city, so, yeah, definitely something for the city to consider, and I think it could be an important provision, if the city really wants to make sure they're protecting as many trees as possible.
Okay, thank you, Kevin.
And mostly, the main reason, too, to protect the native trees in rear yards, is just to make sure that, when a native tree is removed, that it is mitigated, so new trees are planted. Currently, right now, there is no protection for trees in the rear yards, basically, of single-family residents, if you remove them, then you're not obliged at all to plant anything that's to replace it. So, to try to achieve our goals of canopy coverage in the city, mostly, you know, it's not our goal to find people, or make people scared of not wanting to take them out, we just wanna make sure that when they do come out, that they, something is planted, and it's a replacement. And of course, you know, it's gonna take decades for it to actually grow to a size that those trees removed were, so, you know, mostly, our main goal is the mitigation and the replacement of those trees, is what we really are after.
And I believe we mentioned earlier that it was not a significant number of residents that we're anticipating? Are we thinking it's less than 1%, or just a few hundred, a decade? Do we have any numbers on that?
We don't have an exact number on that, the canopy coverage that we did doesn't call out specific types of trees, and how the canopy is created. We do know that the majority of those trees are in backyards, that are in the interface between the native land and the urbanized areas, so, you know, it's kind of a fine band that runs kind of along the hillside areas. I would say that it's probably, you know, less than 10% of the native trees in rear yards of the overall canopy of the city, so it's not a large number, but again, because of the size of those trees, and the canopy they have, they are a bolstering our... they are bolstering our canopy coverage. And losing a, you know, a native oak tree that could have a canopy size the size of this room is a large impact on the community. Not just the community for those living here, but also for habitat and wildlife and things of that nature as well that we want to try to protect. So, you know, with all those things in mind, that's kind of why we're pushing just for the native trees, just because of the impact that they have on all those different things, that the, you know, some of the non-native trees don't have the habitat and things of that nature. And they make up, the non-native trees make up a large, much larger amount of trees planted in rear yards than the actual native trees do.
Okay. Still not in love with the idea. I think my resistance is that we're, I'm not a fan of constantly infringing on some of our property rights. I'm sure at some point we didn't talk about the front yard, and now we talk about side yards if it meets certain criteria, such as next to BART or next to this municipality. And now we're pushing it to the backyard, and what's next? So that's really, and I'm not saying this against trees. I just, I feel for the homeowners on particular instances where they need to remove it, when we're being crushed everywhere you turn with extra taxes for sewer repairs or for school bonds or for this or for that. And so, I know, so anyway, that was my question there. And then...
No, and I would say, too, along with that is that from the comments that we heard before, I think that the, our initial idea was to basically use the appraised value of the tree as replacement, which is a significant cost to a homeowner. Again, if the tree is thirty-five, fifty thousand dollars, something in that, that's quite a large amount. So we've changed the actual mitigation. So if you're removing one or two trees, you're basically just replacing it with a ratio amount of two to one. And, you know, it's basically two twenty-four-inch boxes, which aren't very big trees, and it's basically, that's at a cost of replacing it for, you know, approximately a thousand dollars as compared to if we had to mitigate it for the appraised value of thirty thousand dollars. So we are trying to make it equitable for people to do. Again, our goal is to have those trees mitigated and to do it so it's fair and doesn't place a large burden on the property owner, but does allow the city to make sure that some type of native replacement tree is planted.
Excellent. Thank you very much for answering all that. That's it.
Does Commissioner Goodbody, do you have any questions?
They were already answered. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Stevens?
Thank you. I just have one or two quick questions. And I just, I like what you said about the value of the trees. I think that's awesome because I was a little confused. It seemed like the fine for unauthorized removal seemed too limited. But let's just take this as an example. Let's say I have a twenty-four-inch diameter oak tree. And let's say the ISA tree appraisal comes in, let's say, ten thousand dollars. And maybe that's too low, but let's just say that. So I get charged one hundred and twenty-five percent of that, so that's like twelve thousand five hundred, plus my double permit fee, which is four hundred ninety dollars. So it's like, it's like thirteen thousand five hundred dollars or something like that that I would be fined if I took that tree out. So it's, is that about right or something along those lines?
If you, if you remove the tree, there's some nuance there. If you remove the tree without a permit, so you, if you basically removed a protected tree illegally, then the actual fine would be double the amount of the permit fee. So right now, it's four hundred ninety dollars. And then the mitigation would be based upon, and this is if you took it out illegally without a permit, you would then, the appraised value would then still come into play as far as the replacement goes. If you pulled the permit and the tree was allowed to be removed, then you would be replacing it with two twenty-four-inch box trees at a two-to-one ratio. So it does behoove you to pull the permit because it does take away the appraised value amount and allow you to basically just replace it at the ratio. So you would be paying the permit fee, which again, right now is four hundred ninety dollars. If we go to the sliding scale, it could be less. And then that, the amount, which is approximately a thousand dollars to replace it with basically the two twenty-four-inch box trees.
But the penalty for an unauthorized removal is significant. I mean, it's thousands and thousands and thousands.
That's not correct. No, no. So to be clear, the penalty, if you're removing a tree without a permit, you pay double the permit fee cost. So if it's three hundred dollars, you pay six hundred. That's just the penalty. Separate from that, you have to mitigate the loss of the illegal removal of that tree. So if somebody were coming in, they were going to pay three hundred dollars, they would have to mitigate the removal of that tree. If they were moving one tree, they would have to replace it with two trees. If they illegally removed it, that original permit fee gets doubled from three hundred to six hundred, which is the current process that we have in our municipal code right now. It's not, it's not double the appraised value of the tree.
Right. But that doesn't seem like a disincentive.
They're still required. The only, the penalty that they, that they're imposed is the permit fee. So if somebody is not paying, like I said, if somebody's coming in, they still have to mitigate the loss of that tree. So if they're removing a heritage tree, we would use the appraised value. If they somehow are only removing one tree, there's an automatic for residential properties. If you're moving one or two, there's an automatic one to two, you know, two-to-one replacement. So we would apply that replacement value, but they would still have that fee for not getting the permit. And again, that's not new. That's existing.
So just hear me out for a second. So the fee's trivial, and planting a replacement tree is, or two trees is pretty trivial, too. So I take out a hundred-and-fifty-year-old oak tree, and I pay a couple thousand bucks?
At that point, no, if it, we have the ability to look at, and that was what we were saying, if there, we have, and I think on here, there's a mitigation requirement. Theo, if you can, I know you've dealt with a lot of tree removals. It'd be helpful to...
So, but an oak tree of that size would be considered a heritage oak tree. So the replacement would be based upon not the two-to-one ratio, but the actual appraised value of the tree. So if you took out a hundred-and-fifty-year-old oak tree that was worth thirty-five to fifty thousand dollars, that would be the amount that you would have to mitigate.
Right, so I would pay that amount. I'd pay thirty-five thousand dollars times one hundred and twenty-five percent?
You would pay, if you could not replace one hundred and twenty-five, or if you could not replace the, whatever the appraised value of the tree was on-site, then whatever the remaining amount was would be the in-lu fee, which would have the twenty-five percent then added on to the amount.
And I guess that's my point. My point is, if I have a hundred-and-fifty-year-old oak tree, is that possible to replace?
Oh, it would be possible to replace if you planted a lot of trees. That would be the most efficient way to do it. Of course, you could try to find a large-scale box tree somewhere implanted at that amount that would replace it. So it's mostly, again, based upon what you're replacing it with. So if you replaced it with a hundred-and-twenty-inch box oak tree that costs thirty thousand dollars to replace it, that is very close to the mitigated value, then those things then would offset. Most likely, though, you're probably not going to find a tree that big or want to plant a tree that size, and you're going to plant it with smaller-scale trees. But of course, you couldn't fit fifty twenty-four-inch box trees on your site. You could fit five. And then whatever the remaining value would be left would be, go towards the in-lu fee.
Got it.
Thank you. So I have just a few questions, too. So I was really excited also to see the new appendix. Is there any plan to translate that document into other languages?
That's something we can definitely look at. Yes.
Is it being planned right now, or it's just something that you would, it is? Okay. And aside from it being on the website, which it sounds like is coming, are there plans to potentially have non-digital versions of it, like at the Hayward Library or something like that to make it more accessible?
Yes, definitely.
Okay. So if the appendix were to need an update, or we just wanted to make an update to it, would we have to go back through doing an ordinance update, or can the appendix just be updated on its own?
That's why we have the appendix, is because it can be updated without having to come back to planning commission and council to adopt it, basically. It is a living document. Of course, new trees come, new information is gathered about best practices. We want to be able to, proactively be able to update the appendix. So it is kind of a standalone document, even though it's supporting this, but it is pulled out as a standalone document so it doesn't have to go through a longer process to try to update.
Thank you. And then, I did notice there were visuals in there, which is one of the things I really liked. Has there been any conversation around maybe also including some visuals around like what some of the new common actions that are restricted might mean for people who aren't like clear on what it means to do like trenching or compacting soil or things like that? Like, could there be additional visuals or definitions potentially added?
Oh, definitely. I mean, we can definitely look at those things as far as like little graphics go to help present the story. Yes, we can definitely look at adding those to the appendix itself.
And then my other questions mostly related also to the fees. So I think that most of those have probably been answered. But would, so the language I've heard so far and what I see in the staff report is really non-committal around supporting low-income families. It's a, we could use in-lu fees to do this, but it doesn't say that we will. It doesn't say there's a plan being made. So can you speak a little bit more to like what actually, like what conversations have been had around that? Because I feel like in the past two meetings, we talked about the sliding scale, as if that might be helpful. And it is probably helpful in general to the public, but specifically to low-income families, like what conversations have been had around that?
Our plan is to actually go back to council, actually with this question in mind, to, for them to make that determination of how the in-lu fees will be used and in what percentage that they'll basically be used. So the, that conversation, you know, staff has ideas and recommendations about it, but it will go before the council, and we'll have a more of a community input on that of how they should be used. From staff perspective, we feel that definitely, you know, not just planting new trees in underserved areas, but again, maybe using some of those funds to assist people with pruning or maintenance or fire abatement and things of that nature, those in-lu fee funds could be used for. But that will be presented to the council for them to discuss and then determine.
So would you be willing tonight, as part of our recommendations to city council, to add in some language saying that that is going to be a part of it?
I'm actually going to just push back a little bit. The spending of city resources is solely the purview of city council. And so if the commission wants to recommend that the in-lu fees be calculated and part of it goes for that, then that's fine. But the situation is, is that there's a lot of, number one, we haven't, we don't have an official program yet, so we don't even know. We haven't, we have no understanding or no knowledge about what the potential revenues would be. We don't want to make a commitment to the community about potentially helping them out if we don't know what that would even look like. And to be honest, there's a lot of competing objectives. There's objectives to plant more trees and more street trees along street frontages. There's, there's an objective to help homeowners maintain their trees. There's an objective to try to expand tree canopy in areas that are currently underserved to be able to meet a canopy threshold. And then, of course, there's the financial implication of some of the low-income neighborhoods. And so we're proposing to bring all of that to council and have them kind of figure out what would be the best way. But how money should be spent really does not belong in a municipal code. That's really, those funds and how that money should, you know, whether it's, unless it's, of course, unless it's like a fixed fee, like the master fee schedule or like an in-lu fee. But even a lot of those in-lu fees are codified in the master fee schedule. It's not separately a part of the ordinance. So we, but if the commission would like to recommend to council on how they believe that in-lu fees should be programmed, certainly I would encourage the commission to do that.
Thank you for that. My question wasn't actually so much about just the spending of the in-lu fees. It's more about a plan around looking into do something for low-income families. So that is actually what I'd like to see. I don't necessarily want to put in language around the in-lu fees specifically and how those would be spent, but I do want the commitment that that is something that is going to be looked into in order for me to feel like I could recommend it. So I can speak more to that in the comment section. But thank you for that.
Staff is definitely committed to using fees for underserved and low-income. So that would be part of our recommendation.
Thank you. So would residents, and you may have said this, I apologize if you did, but can residents actually request that trees are planted in their neighborhood, or would that all be based on city priorities and canopy cover and things like that?
Currently now, you can request, if you don't have a street tree, you can request a new street tree to be planted. That's as far as the extent of planting new trees go that we have. Again, there's, you know, been discussion about working with nonprofits to do planting in neighborhoods. That would be mostly people planting on private property new trees. But right now, they have the ability, if they want a new tree, they can request a new street tree, basically.
Thank you. I don't have any further questions or any other commissioner questions? Okay, I'm not seeing any. Thank you again for the presentation. So at this time, we will move on to public comments. Ms. Ellen, are there any public comments for this item?
There are none.
Thank you. So we will close public comment and move on to commissioner comments. Commissioner Stevens?
Thank you for doing this. This is the best thing that I've had the pleasure of being a part of. And as the steward of literally hundreds of native trees here in Hayward, I value them as a resource. They're not only a resource for me, but they're a resource for the entire community. So I fully support every element of this. I think it's absolutely critical that we preserve whatever native items we have left. I think, you know, we as a society, when we buy properties, I think we have to be responsible. We have to be stewards of the land. If we buy properties with trees, we have to be able to afford it. And so I think that that's just yet another obligation of life. If you're going to get yourself into something, you better be able to afford it. So I'd like to make a motion to move this item on to city council.
I would second that.
Great. So we have a motion and a second. Do we have other commissioner comments? Commissioner Hammond?
Yes, I may be repeating myself, but first and foremost, I am in favor of protecting all of our protected Hayward trees. And I'd very much like to see how we can expand our canopy to more than the ten percent that our city has set as a goal. I know that if we were to grow our canopy, we'll need to expand where we plant trees and to protect our trees, even if they are located in our backyards. We all need to do our part. I do believe that this, these updates to the tree ordinance aim to preserve our present, preserve our present canopy and to make the process of keeping, maintaining and removal of our trees clear and equitable. I think that the in-lu fees need to be examined maybe a little bit further and how we're going to help those property owners who can't afford to remove or maintain their trees. In general, though, I am, I agree with and support the proposed text amendments, and I approve the amendments to the two thousand and six master fee schedule and to the sequa findings. And I'm also very pleased with the added reference to the, to the street tree list in the appendix. For me, it was very informative. And last, the city spends a considerable amount of time and money cleaning up after some of the residents and visitors that litter our city. This is money that could be going towards planting and maintaining our trees. And I'd like to encourage everyone to consider helping to keep our city free of trash so that our resources and money could be better spent. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hammond. Other comments? Commissioner comments? Commissioner Goodbody, did you have a comment?
No.
Okay, well, then I will go. So again, I really did love the appendix, and thank you for that. I think it's wonderful. I love the checklist. I love all the visuals. I think it's really user-friendly, so I just wanted to note that. Definitely... Definitely don't have a, a issue actually recommending the fee schedule itself. I think it's really nice what you've all done with the sliding scale. I think it's very clear. So the rear yard issue, I feel like I've been over that with you all enough times that I, although I didn't love it at first, like, I understand why we're doing it, and it's specifically about native trees, so I also could recommend that. My, my issue, and the one that I just already brought up around the, the support for low-income families, like, that really matters to me. I don't think that people should be, like, in a situation where they're become penalized and criminalized for things they may actually want to do. They may actually want to mitigate the tree or to remove the tree that they should or to replant, you know, and they're, but they're unable to. So I just really want us to be cognizant of people who may be in situations like that and do what we can to help. I think we have other measures in the city where there's potential for fee reductions or waivers for different things, or even payment plans, or, you know, just creative ideas. It doesn't have to be like, we have this pot of money, and this is how we're going to use it. But I really would like to see just a commitment to supporting people who may need that support so that we're not, like, penalizing or criminalizing, criminalizing them in some way. And I just think it's also just important for us all as a community of, you know, the goal of this is to, it says, improve the environment, air quality, water and pollution, provide shade, reduce the heat island. That's the things that everyone named in the survey. Of course, we want fire protection, and I think we would all agree with that. So whatever we can do to make that easier for everyone to do it, that is my comment. But yes, I do support this, and I thank you for all your hard work on it.
If there are no other comments, Ms. Allen, can you call a roll?
Commissioner Franco Claussen, absent. Commissioner Goodbody?
Yes.
Commissioner Hammond?
Yes.
Commissioner Lo?
Yes.
Commissioner Myers?
In an effort to not bite off my nose despite my face due to the rear yard issues, I will say yes.
Commissioner Stevens?
Enthusiastic, yes.
Chair Hardy?
Yes. Thank you. All right. We will move on to our next action item, which is the approval of minutes from the planning commission meeting from May 8th, 2025. Do we have a motion for approval?
I move that we approve the minutes.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Commissioner Goodbody. Ms. Allen, can you please call a roll?
Commissioner Franco Claussen, absent. Commissioner Goodbody?
Yes.
Commissioner Hammond?
Yes.
Commissioner Lo?
Yes.
Commissioner Myers?
Yes.
Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
Chair Hardy?
Yes. We will now move on to our commission reports. Do we have an oral report on planning and zoning matters?
We do. I am, I'm sure many of you are probably wondering, what's happening next? Are we going to have another meeting? And likely, the answer is no. We will be canceling the second meeting in June. We don't have anything currently scheduled, so the good news for the commission is that if you have any holiday plan, any plans for the summer, you can probably do that and not have to worry about coming to a planning commission meeting, because our next regularly scheduled meeting will be on August 28th. And currently, we will have at least one, possibly two items that we think will be ready for that agenda item. So for that, for that agenda. So with that in mind, you will actually get an official notification next week, once we've confirmed that we have nothing last minute. I'll be on the lookout for that. And with that, I just hope everyone has a wonderful, safe 4th of July. No fireworks, please, just a nice, safe 4th of July and a relaxing summer. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any commissioners that have any announcements or referrals? Not seeing any. With that, I will adjourn our meeting at 8:17 PM.
Recording stopped.